And then there's a player that was forty-one and he's playing against a twenty-seven-year-old.
Augur.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody, and welcome to the planning board meeting of June twenty-six, two thousand thirteen. Tonight in attendance, we have Bob Watts, we have Christopher Rich, Tilly Evangelista, myself, I'm Harry Lacatilia. We have Howard Snyder as our town planner, and Wendy Beaumont's taking minutes for us. And without any further ado, meeting's called to order at seven oh, what is that, eight? Seven oh six.
Mr. Chairman.
Seven oh six. Mr. Rich.
I move that we accept the minutes of June twelfth, two thousand thirteen, subject to any corrections.
Chris moves to accept the minutes.
My colleagues.
Of, what was that dating, Christopher, June twelfth? June twelfth, two thousand thirteen, subject to corrections. Is there a second for that?
Second it?
Ooh.
I defer to.
Okay, well, until we got that second.
Absolutely.
You're gonna have to be a little quicker there, we're off that block.
It's all right.
Okay, go for it, kids. What do we see?
All comments on the minutes have been picked up, and so the copy here is.
Previously signed?
Yeah.
Cool.
What we got in here?
See anything else, guys?
It's in here.
I think that we haven't received any comments.
Oh.
Oh, I thought I sent some.
You did, but all the comments were picked up, I believe, in the packet that went out on Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Or do we, no, we, Monday?
I did them on, um.
Monday, Tuesday, yeah.
So what we're reading on the computer is not accurate?
No.
Right, so these are the accurate.
So some of my things could be already.
You didn't give me any changes.
I know, but, but I have since then, since I've read it, I, you know, so.
I've not gotten, I personally have not gotten any changes for.
No, I didn't send them, no, I just read it today. So I figured that, you know, you already did them and everything.
You can make them now, whatever you want.
Well, I don't, maybe they've already been made.
The only changes that are on there are the ones that Harry had sent.
Yeah, I just had some little stuff.
Because I did not receive anything from you.
And, yeah, I didn't send it, there's no problem, yeah. No, one question. I had a couple of adjustments, but the one question, the OSRD process, as I understood it, was that it was an official application, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Well, in the minutes, you had that we closed it, so if that's an official application, it has to be voted, a yes or a nay. And we didn't do that, and it's, and we're limited on the time to do that.
You think there's a time limit there?
Yeah.
Well, she's given us an extension.
Okay.
Yeah.
At the meeting, which you actually need to sign tonight.
Did we already vote for it? I thought we had at the last meeting, but it wasn't in the minutes, so then I thought, well, we're.
No, you need to.
Close that portion of the meeting, right?
You haven't voted on the extension of time.
Okay.
No, but we have to vote on whether we are supporting it or not.
Two ninety.
No, you don't have to vote on whether or not you're supporting the OSRD, because they submitted a preliminary that's continuing the public hearing.
Because that's all part of the OSRD?
Right.
Okay.
So you, what the motion made. What's that?
Even though it's bifuricated.
It was bifuricated, because you were doing the OSRD, and you're doing the preliminary, and you're saying we're not, you made a motion not to continue listening to.
To close the OSRD portion.
Portion, so you're continuing the hearing, just entertaining the preliminary.
So we haven't actually closed the hearing, all we did was we closed the OSRD portion of that bifurcate.
I understand that, but I thought we needed a vote.
So the special permit is still going.
I thought we needed a vote whether we want to use, I thought we already did this, because you've already, by moving it ahead, um, and closing it, rather, um, instead, and you need a vote, I think, on a special permit like that. I'm not sure, but I think.
Was it the wording of the motion that concerns you?
I think it should be stated so that it, you make the motion an affirmative, and then you vote yes or no. And I think if it was no, it would be.
Well, maybe what we can do is when, when's the next, the continuation of this?
July twenty-fourth.
July twenty-fourth, okay, well, as soon as we reopen the hearing, July twenty-fourth, when we're in hearing, we'll make the motion, and we'll tidy that, we'll send up.
Yeah, it's a technicality that can cause trouble if you don't get it right.
I hear you, I hear you, we don't, yeah, close that door.
All right.
Yep.
We can certainly do that. But as far as these minutes are concerned, that was, um, two ninety, and it seems in order, two ninety. Mr. Rich, motion to close the OSRD portion of the hearing, seconded by Mr. Howard, motion carries four to one unanimously.
That was what it was, four to one unanimous, that doesn't make any sense, was that cleared up?
It was.
And, because, motion, um, four to one, it wasn't unanimous, okay, it was four to one, okay.
And when I was talking with Lou, I was talking about the, um, number five-five-three, I have each, I was talking about his.
Five fifty-three?
On East Main Street, I wasn't talking about Searl Street. He doesn't have anything on Searl.
Five-five, five-five.
Five-five-three, I think.
And what is it that you want changed on that?
Instead of Searl, put in East Main Street Fields Project. That's his application for site approval.
Fields Project.
Okay.
Not Searl.
Yeah.
All right.
Is there anything else you're watching?
Overall, they're really good, you know, I like them.
Don't get Wendy's head too big now.
Oh, my head will never get big over the next, trust me.
Bob, did you have any comments?
No, I'm good.
Christopher, we good? I'm gonna call that, oh, hang on a second, let me get back to the right page here, if you would, be with me for a second, guys. Yeah. Uh, motion is made to accept the June twelfth, two thousand thirteen, minutes with the corrections that were made, seconded by Tilly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Great. What did I do with my agenda? Is that?
Tilly's writing her notes on the back of the minutes, so we'll just take those when she's done.
You're writing, oh, okay. Those aren't yours.
Huh?
That's the file copy.
What?
That's the file copy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Howard, why don't you?
I thought you were writing them on purpose that way, so.
No, I didn't.
It's a correction. Why don't you, why don't you give us a quick, very quick update about the two correspondences that we got?
Newberry, the zoning board of appeals, sent us a special permit, uh, regarding property that's on eighty-eight Northern Boulevard, that's Palm Island, and that's. Far from Georgetown. The other piece of information that's a little bit more in terms of correspondence, is FEMA sent us an updated preliminary flood insurance rate map. I guess from some of the responses they've been receiving to their latest issue of the flood insurance rate maps, they have revised. A portion of the Parker River that is in Newberry, but because that portion they're revising in Newberry is on a panel that's shared by Georgetown, they notified us, in the same way that Town of Newberry notified us of the zoning board, it's for your information.
It's an FYI, basically, right?
Yeah, but it won't be affecting anything that's occurring in Georgetown.
Change in Georgetown, and Steve, presumably the Conservation Commission received the DVD, right?
Are you?
No, we received it.
Oh, so the Conservation Commission received it.
Uh, well, they sent a letter to the Board of Selectment, Conservation Commission, the Planning Office.
Yeah.
And, but we are the keepers of all the maps and the DVDs and everything else, so that.
So Steve turned it over to you?
Yeah.
As long as it's in town hall, we can find it.
Have you received complaints about it from residents?
About the flood insurance? Oh, yeah. It slowed down, I actually had two people in this week, and it's, it's been consistent.
That's why I was confused when I read that, I said, this letter, now, does that mean that you've already, they've already done a revised one, and that they've done another revised one? And you're talking about the second revised one?
No, it's just the first revision.
So they never did any changes in Georgetown?
No, no.
Since nineteen seventy, I think it was.
Well, since the last one in eighty-six, the only updates to the Georgetown flood insurance is the fact that it was overlaid with aerials. Um, and with the aerials were streets and reference points, but in terms of actual flood elevation, no, that's, anything that's been progressing along in terms of flood elevations and stages and things like that, that information has been brought into it, but they haven't done any of their own flood insurance. Modify, uh, flood level, the way they did out in places like Palm Island and the Maribor.
No elevation changes.
Right.
Gotcha. Interesting.
But since they started these, whenever they've received anything from the subdivisions that have occurred and things like that, they've integrated that information in.
Yeah, because I've had complaints from different people, and, you know, people that have been in town for quite a while. And, um, either, either they renovated, or they did any addition, and now they have to have flood insurance where prior to that they didn't.
Well, there are two things with that, is if they own their house and they don't have a mortgage, they don't know about it, they're not notified. But if they go back to refinance.
Yeah.
In any ways, or to take out a new loan, they're notified that they need to carry it.
Right, that's what I.
But.
What about regular insurance, if someone didn't have flood insurance before the new maps came out, before the new rate maps came out? And would, would an insurance company be notifying them?
I've heard everybody coming in wanting to know is because the mortgage company notified them.
Mortgage institution.
When they go to sell it, they're being told, you're in a flood zone, and then the owners need to find out.
That's the trigger, huh?
Would have never been in it or told, because they probably owned it.
Yeah, a few years.
And so, uh, we had somebody in today that had a, the flooding area was probably about four feet onto their property, and so they were told, you need to carry flood insurance.
Yeah.
Because FEMA doesn't know where the built structures are, or what property is in that four-foot area that might be damaged.
Right.
So.
And are they doing anything about it, or is it?
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna have to have it certified by a surveyor or an engineer and send it back to FEMA. Let's get the letter of map changed, it says, there's nothing here but a couple of trees, so we don't need to carry it.
The important, the important takeaway is there is a process, Howard can help people with it, and it sounds like you're regularly doing that.
Yeah, I've got the.
Kudos to you.
I've got all the documents down, here you go, this is what you need, so.
Right, nice, nice. Motion for the, um, the invoices.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rich.
I move that we pay vouchers in a total amount of six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
Motion to pay the vouchers by Chris Rich in the total of six hundred and eight and thirty-one cents, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Bob, very quickly, very quickly.
No game on tonight, but, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chan, yes, yes, Mr. Vice Chairman. Can I help you?
You did get sunstroke today.
I did, it was very hot today.
Question, if I may, to throw you to the planner, I noticed that Graham Associates invoices are from December of two thousand twelve.
Yeah.
Wow, that's early.
It's a long time.
It is.
What happened?
Uh, because there wasn't enough money in the escrow account to pay the bill, and.
Which one is this for?
That is for Bank of America. So I contacted Bank of America, I contacted Gensler consistently, and the same difficulties they went through in setting up the escrow account, they went through with trying to get additional funds, and finally I get to the point where they came in requesting building permit, and I said, I'm not gonna sign it off.
Good for you.
So, uh, the engineering company, Stonefield, ended up sending the check, making the deposit.
And they get reimbursement later.
Yeah.
Well, the important thing is the M account now has the money to pay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very interesting, the Chairman of the Board of Selectment told, made a comment to me that we held up Bank of America. Not held up with a gun, but held up.
I'm very glad to hear that.
Delayed them.
So glad to hear that.
But it's interesting that they took their ever-loving time to pay the appropriate fee, and our, um, technical review agent has been waiting for his money since December tenth, two thousand twelve.
Wow, that's.
I have to tell you, I would have brought them back in, reopened the hearing, and told them that they had to refile and repay the filing fee if it wasn't paid. Because that's part of the application process, isn't it?
Yes.
That they have to maintain the M account?
Yeah, one of the things that we have, to my knowledge, is that the M account is to be at a level of four thousand.
Initial at four thousand, but that's always been considered by the board for what?
And sometimes we lower it to two thousand, depending upon the complexity of the fund, and, um.
But the minimum balance that triggers is two thousand.
It's two thousand, so when it drops to two thousand, then you ask for payment, and if.
Well, this is, yeah, this is a bill for four hundred and five dollars.
Yeah, so it must have dropped a little bit lower than.
And I would.
Well, drop below four.
Well, again, we have to be vigilant about when we, um, close hearings, when we, um, when we sign my lives. I usually ask, and I probably failed to ask, what the M account balance was at the time when we signed the my lives.
Can we put that on our checklist?
Sure, because you can, you can, at the time you're signing the my lives, if there's not gonna be any site inspectional services, there's no need for them to count to continue.
We cannot sign the my life.
Right.
We could refuse to sign it at that point until the check, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, can't find the pen.
You know.
Just can't find the pen till we find the check.
Graham is very responsive to us.
Right.
And I hate to see the man wait for his money.
Yeah, is he finished now in sorting, or does he?
No, it was unique with Bank of America, where you requested in the decision that he'd go when they'd start doing some discovery on the site.
What's the M account balance now, he's gonna be, this is a, this is a bill from December twelfth, he's gonna be, I saw work out there, just commenced in the last week or so.
Right, yeah, off the top of my head, I don't know what the count is, but it's back up to two thousand.
Up to two thousand?
Yeah. It might be.
Think that'll be adequate?
Nineteen hundred and fifty or something.
In the range of two thousand, think that'll be adequate for the inspection that he's gonna need? So it sounds like we.
But by the same token, though, I mean, Sixnerino Way, six-seven, oh, is that, maybe, there's an invoice date of six-seven-twelve on the schedule, and six-seven-thirteen on the invoice, so, never mind. Never mind. I was just scanning it, and it looked like, wow, that's even later.
Oh, that's right.
But.
The vendor date, oh, the vendor date for.
Graham says June seventh, two thousand thirteen, but our.
The invoice does, yeah.
The, um.
Schedule of department.
Oh, it's the same invoice?
The warrant.
But, but, it's a, it's, it's the same invoice, that's what it is.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a mistake.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not looking at the right bill.
A Scrivener's mistake.
This is, this is the Bank of America invoice, this is also the Bank of America invoice, but it has a different, yeah, you would assume that this is the one for, the other one for Norino.
Why they call it a bank.
That's the past two and the yellow one. Norino's there, there you go, okay, that's two thousand thirteen.
It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, too. Versus four hundred and five. But we paid WB Mason in ten days, ten days.
Oh, so, good, good pickup there, Bob, the, the bill's payables filled out incorrectly. Vendor date should be thirteen, good pickup there, Bob.
Which one are you looking at?
Sixnerino Way.
Yeah, M, the one for one twenty-five?
Yeah.
Check out their vendor date.
Is.
In the last column.
Six-seven.
Twelve, twenty-twelve.
Right? That must have just been a, a remnant from the, the one before, right, good pickup, Bob. Well, that doesn't affect the authorization of the bills themselves.
Nope.
Any other questions regarding the bills?
I have one question, on the WB Mason bill, what's a bookend comma fashion book?
Bookends.
They're bookends, they're not elephant bookends or anything like that, but they're bookends.
Plain metal bookend.
The whole books.
The whole books.
It was the word fashion, comma, book.
Well, it's fashionable because it's black, they're black.
They think they're special.
Sounds very fashionable.
Like Henry Ford, you can have Model T any color you like, as long as you like black.
As long as you like it black, okay.
Great, thank you.
Motion by Chris to pay the vouchers totaling six oh eight and thirty-one cents, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make sure you sign the three different.
Motion carries unanimously. You wanna send them out, and we'll start scribbling. Bob, if, if you wouldn't mind starting it, it sounds like, you say there's three that to sign, right? Bing, 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 new business, new business, chapter one sixty-five, scope and schedule of bylaw changes for coming special town meeting. This is your, um, this is your schedule, right, Howard, this is the schedule that we asked you to, um, put together for us? So that we can manage the solar and wind bylaw additions, and the medical marijuana bylaw additions for the special town meeting in the fall.
As well as the, any changes to definitions and use schedule.
We want some definitions for certain words.
And I placed the, the schedule and definitions at the end, because we'll be incorporating it to those, things from the solar, wind, and the medical marijuana.
Absolutely, that changes the intensity of use and all that stuff, yeah.
Now, the, obviously, they haven't scheduled a special town meeting date yet, but I went under, uh, the idea that it's gonna be around October twenty-eighth, I believe, is that what I?
You have it showing here as October twenty-eighth, and.
Right, so if it moves into the first week of November, we're still covered, it's, it's a conservative date, because if he starts moving earlier in October, we only have a week or two to give before.
We have reaction time, though.
Right, our, our, one week out, our fourteen days out, all those things that need to be done in terms of the warrant.
Right.
So, those are the anticipated, if we start moving earlier October, we start losing the public hearing date and warrant dates, but if it goes deeper into November, we're fine.
We're all set, well, I don't think we'll be doing too many in October, as far as, uh, I don't remember the Fall Town Meeting being in October, it's usually November, isn't it? Maybe I'm, for some reason, I'm.
It's usually in the beginning.
Usually the beginning of November, yeah.
So I just.
So I think we're on the safe side. Good move, nice, well, anybody wanna go through this, month by month, June, it looks like, uh, at our next meeting, we will be, um, reviewing the notice for the Publix.
No, that's actually tonight, isn't it?
That's tonight, it's shown on the twenty-sixth, but we can certainly do it tonight.
Today's the twenty-sixth.
Today is the twenty-sixth, what am I talking about?
No wonder we can do it tonight.
Wow, well, I'm glad we're right on schedule.
Actually, this is a good job.
We're good.
This does make the whole process easier.
Now, if, if, the thing about the, sending off the publication, the one thing I was not aware of when I did this, was the Georgetown record is not published on the fourth. So what's, that is gonna require, is that we can do a public hearing notice in the Georgetown record on the eleventh.
Let's just put in the Tribune.
But we can put it in the Tribune or the Daily News on the seventeenth or something.
Stick right to the schedule and throw it on the trip.
It has to be paper of general circulation.
Yeah, okay, so, um, in accordance with provisions of Chapter forty-eight. It's, oh, thank you, Tilly, you wanna sign some of those? Looks like we'll be holding, we'll be making notice if this notice is approved, um, and we give Howard the green light. We will be doing solar energy facilities and wind energy, wind energy facilities. And the public hearing for that will be July twenty-fourth at seven thirty PM, right here. Does anybody see any problems with this, um? Notice here?
It's very good. In your next packet, you will be receiving the draft bylaws for the solar and the wind.
Okay, did, did, did you tweak them at all, Howard, for Georgetown, or are those the models, yep?
Yeah, Wendy did some great research, and we looked at model bylaws, not only that the state had done, but ones that had actually been, um, that are in place in neighboring Essex County communities.
Adopted already.
Adopted already.
Great.
Newburyport, Ipswich, Essex.
And that's for solar?
That, for solar and wind.
And wind.
Yeah, um, so we reviewed those and started doing some picking and assembling, and, uh, we're still in the culling those down to make it a little bit more concise.
Is it just large-scale we're dealing with?
Right, for, for solar and wind, we're considering just the large-scale energy generation, commercial facilities.
Commercial facilities.
And there's a couple.
Non-residential?
Non-residential, uh, and there's a slight differentiation in terms of wind and solar that we're considering in terms of if it's generated onsite for a commercial property on the site, so if it's self-contained. Versus generated on that and shipped offsite, so that's something else.
Anything that you made that was excess had to be purchased back by the power company.
Well, that's a good question, and I'm talking with the municipal light department next week to go over some of these draft bylaws.
I thought that was like a state.
Under the DPU regulations.
Under regs.
Any, um, excess power, you turn the meter, you run the meter backwards, they have to buy it at their wholesale rate.
Right.
Yeah, but if they don't have the connection in town, if they don't have the correct connections, they can't do it, because we have a town municipal, it's different, they can't do it.
There's no exception in the law.
Yeah, I, I think, um.
I didn't get, I got the impression from Holy Cross Conference.
Get with the, get with this program, you know, this is the twentieth, twenty-first century.
So, and then the other, the important thing is, this is a public hearing, and I, I would certainly hope that we're gonna hear.
You spin the meter backwards, they pay.
Detailed comments from our municipal light department about these things.
Right.
And, uh, hear what they have to say about it, and I'm sure if, uh, any of the light commissioners, or, um, whoever the new manager of the light department is.
David.
Is, uh, present in the audience, they'll be public officials, and they'll be, uh, one of the first to, to speak, I would hope.
So we won't have a residential bylaw?
For, for this, I'm just considering, and again, this is something if the board wants to consider, but the draft that I've come up with is just commercial, and it, it considers ground-mounted units, it doesn't consider roof-mounted units, and it also considers kilowatt capacity. So if it's below, where it's not commercially viable, but it would be residential kilowatt production, it's not considering those things.
Can I find that for me, Howard, give me that, in other words, if I'm a homeowner?
If you're a homeowner, you're not gonna install a sixty-kilowatt solar energy generating facility, because that would be way too much energy for you. It's, that would be almost a commercial type of enterprise, it's a large size, probably not gonna be able to put it onto your property.
I see my electric bill lately.
There's some large, private, residentially-zoned properties in Georgetown.
I would think we're, we've got ninety percent residents, so that we should concentrate on that.
Well, I think we, I think we need to at least address it.
But you, a bylaw for a residential where people are putting those panels up on their roof.
Right.
Is allowed by right, by, by the state.
I, I would almost think that we shouldn't touch anybody, but if they wanna put something on their roof, I mean, I can't see prohibiting it or requiring a permit.
I don't have a problem with it, I just wanted to make sure that we knew what we were doing, that's why I asked about large scale. There are companies that are going out with people that own more than five acres of land. There are companies, and I've been approached by one, on parcels that my family owns, that want to put solar farms up.
Right.
And they pay so much per kilowatt.
Right, they lease it from me.
Right.
They, they'll lease it from me for a twenty-year term.
Yeah.
But what do they do with the energy?
What do they do with it, they sell it, they sell it to the grid.
So that's, that's commercial, that's what the bylaw is gonna consider.
I understand that, a caveat to that, that we need to think about, is when that lease is up. who's responsible for the dismantling and disposal of the panels?
Well, the, the bylaws as written have, the way I've organized them, you go through how it applies, what the definitions are, and then how it's going to come in, how it's going to be processed by the board, how it's going to be built, and at the very end, there's a section on, uh, abandonment. Um, and it breaks out how you're going to do a surety that goes with the land.
Just want to make sure that we have that base covered.
Right.
That's great.
And that, that's actually written in the state, abandonment and discontinuance.
It's in the state model by law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, uh, your statement that our residents in a residential zone, if, because they sell it, you're calling it commercial? Is that what you're defining it? Not according to the zones?
Not, not according to the zone, but the bylaw is considering energy generation facilities where it generates renewal, from renewable energy, it generates power.
Right.
And then it's sold out off the property.
Right, so why would that be our concern? Where, excuse me, our issue would be what district to, would be approval? What district do you want it in? I mean, do we want it, uh, to the extent of a commerc-? When you're saying commercial, you're talking businesses.
When I, when I, when I stated commercial, I was talking about earth genera- uh, the power generation for profit.
Yeah.
And so a commercial enterprise. I'm not talking about the zone. It, it can be in a residential, industrial, more appropriate in, in the industrial, or it could be a large residential lot.
Right.
So it'd be all across Georgetown, but as Chris was saying, five acres.
Right, that's residential.
That, that, there's an economy of scale that, that goes on. So, uh, for somebody on a one-acre piece of property, the ability to, the, the businesses aren't going to be attracted to that type of property downtown.
But they will look at, we have a parcel in downtown Boston, it's two and a half acres, and they will look, they, they came and looked at it.
And probably one reason why it was so viable to them is because they could connect to the distribution very easily.
Well, yeah, I mean, it sits right on it.
And that's something the, the light department's going to be dealing with. As I understand, Georgetown is in four different generation districts. And they've got some districts that have all the power and on all the demand times and everything else. In other areas, they might be a little bit weaker in terms of where the power goes to.
Well, I know in Saugus, the energy companies are coming in and putting them on the roofs of houses. Free. Because I guess NSTAR and, um, have, some of the utilities have committed, that so many of their customers are basically going to be off the grid, off their grid. I mean, they'll lease, these people end up leasing these panels. They're installed at no cost to the homeowner.
On the roof?
On the roof.
Okay.
My father's house, bottom of the hill. Remember, we went by the house and the, the entire front of the house was covered with.
Right.
Solar panels with its own meter.
Yep.
The utility put those in.
Yep.
At no cost to the homeowner.
The whole roof was covered. That entire roof is, was a, uh, picture of a hill, a south-facing hill. Yep, yep, the entire roof was covered.
Well, it's, it's being encouraged so much in Massachusetts in terms of solar, that they've met their goal, I think, six, seven years early. In, in terms of the credits and everything else that, that come to the state. And in ter- I think they're at, I think annually a three or six megawatt production, so they're going to keep going, and they're really encouraging it.
I know the house on the top of Andover Hill, that's kind of perfect.
Yeah.
Exposure to the sun for solar.
Newburyport now, I understand.
I bet.
The conservation board denied it, and it was appealed, and they couldn't do it.
Uh, that was in, I think you're talking about the one off of Scotland Road. That, that was actually in Newbury. Or West Newbury. It, it was, uh, it was a special permit that was denied because, uh, enough of the board thought that the, the great farm area was a visual, even though there isn't any state designation, it was a visual corridor that needed to be preserved. Uh, so that's why they denied it.
Well, that wasn't where they had the cattle out in the field, and he's got a farm stand.
They, they, there wasn't enough study done in terms of visually. It wasn't really clear to me. But as I understand it, it wasn't going to be seen right up next to Scotland Road. You're still going to see the cows, but it would be off in the distance. But enough residents thought that as being an impact to their visual, um, quality that it got denied.
So, didn't they?
I haven't heard about the case. I thought it was still in the appeal process.
Well, Beverly runs their new school and everything that's attached to it, with the solar farm that's right behind it.
And that would be a ground-mounted array.
It's all ground-mounted.
So if I'm, if I'm getting some of the elements here that I, I have to start wrapping my mind around, we have, um, a threshold of production. And where, where is that threshold? What is it? One megawatt, two?
No, um.
What are you proposing?
The, the, as I understand it, in, with the state one that they did, they did a hundred and twenty-five to nine hundred and ninety-nine kilowatt.
Kilowatt?
As a energy generation facility, and one megawatt above is very large.
Yes.
And so there's some consideration for that. And so a hundred and twenty-five and below.
A hundred and twenty-five kilowatt.
Right.
And below.
And below. And what I'd like to do when we start discussing it more is to come up with a graphic that shows what a hundred and twenty-five kilowatt facility looks like.
Yeah.
In terms of acreage and maybe overlay it on one or two different areas of Georgetown, so we could see to do a hundred and twenty-five, you need five acres or ten acres.
Ten acres, depending upon how.
Twenty-five kilowatts in what length of time?
Um, the, the.
Per kilowatt hour?
Per hour.
Average, I think it probably pick up, and then at night it goes down or something.
What does, uh, what's the average household use?
I don't know.
That's, that's another, that's another graphic we need.
The, the bylaw, then send me the questions that I have them for the public hearing.
Let the record show that, uh, Tim arrives.
Well, I would like, definitely like the.
Seven forty-five.
And, uh.
Hi, Tim.
You know, when we have the hearings, I think.
He'll be here.
Requested to be here.
Yeah.
And, and we're, we're going to get together and be able to have a, a functional succinct presentation, so.
Well, I know you're going to have to educate me, Howard.
Yeah, we'll have maps up there and pointed things, so we can explain where the distribution is and everything else, because it is technical. But interestingly enough, it, it, the, the wind generation has been a lot more complicated because there's a lot more testing that needs to go on. There's, uh, I think Bob had even mentioned it, there's, there are harmonics of the wind blade, there's the, how it casts a shadow, there's FAA regulations on lighting and everything else, so.
Now, interestingly enough, i- is that also something that's triggered by a threshold, uh, of a certain amount of megawatts or under? Because I noticed, I was looking through some, I don't know, some catalog or something, or Northern Catalog or something. And for like six hundred bucks, you can buy a wind generating, because a, a wind turbine that you crank up in your backyard and you don't remember how many megawatts.
But it's a generator.
It is a wind generator.
You mean milliwatts?
I, I, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, good enough for a flashlight.
I, I really don't know.
And the, the bylaw.
Again, this is all part of my education I'm going to need Eric to understand this.
I know there's one in the making. It's, it's prototype is done, that you literally plug into an outlet in your house. And it returns the energy into the house. How it doesn't cause a backfeed problem?
I don't. But that's interesting, you know, where, where that line would be. I mean, if we were.
It's a little bit less with, with the wind generators. I think it's at sixty kilowatts.
Okay.
And it, in, in the same way that roof-mounted is not being considered with the solar, roof-mounted is not being considered for, uh, the, the wind generation too. And, but you can consider the home use type of ones in, in terms of how you, uh, allow, if it needs to be monopole or with guy wires and things like that.
And if it can fall into your neighbor's property.
Right, there's certain setback requirements.
I would think. That, that would probably be something you might want to look at. I mean, I'm not concerned about my neighbor having a, a wind turbine in his or her yard, but depending on how tall the pole is, if it can fall in my yard, then I'd be concerned.
A, a lot of the, the bylaws in terms of the wind state that it needs to be one and a half times, it needs to be sighted one and a half times from the nearest property line.
Okay, so it's addressed.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Sounds like you're on top of it.
That's the same way as the tower bylaws that we have.
Yes, that would be the height of the pole plus the length of the blade.
Right. And so that's, sometimes I, I saw one that was two times too.
Interesting.
There's one, uh, wind road down in, uh, I think it was Falmouth, somewhere on the Cape, somewhere around the Falmouth area that, that I actually saw some video on and being in the neighbor, the neighbor's house. And at the right time of day, when the sun's at the, the right time of the year, because obviously it's not as bad when the sun's overhead, but when the sun's like further out on the horizon, it's pretty obnoxious to be in the neighbor's house.
There's flicker.
Oh, it's brutal.
The blade spinning around.
And of course, you know, she says there's all kinds of psychological problems and health problems she's experiencing, and maybe it's true, I don't know. It looked pretty, it looked pretty annoying.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, really.
Well, we can't stand it when our TV flickers.
If you're epileptic or something, that, that just.
Even if you're not.
Stroke can be a little concerning.
I've driven on ninety-seven into Georgetown when the sun was at the right angle, just going between the trees.
Through the trees.
It can be really, um.
Be disconcerting.
Yeah, distracting and.
You gotta slow down.
Well, we're not only hearing tonight, I think the only thing before us at this point is, um, that Howard's, uh, created a draft notice, and, uh, we'll, uh, we'd hope that, uh, we can, um, everybody's happy with the way this has all been written out.
In schedule.
I would think that what we would want to do at this point is to, um, I'll hear a motion to authorize Howard to, um, advertise the zoning amendment. Hearing notices for wind and solar. And you wanted to put that in what paper, Howard?
Uh, the Georgetown Record on July eleventh and the Newburyport Daily News on the seventeenth.
That meets the schedule if you want to do it in the comment.
Yeah, seven days and fourteen days.
Okay. Great, uh, so, um, Chris, did you make that motion? Chris authorizes Howard to, um, advertise the solar and the wind bylaws?
I did.
Is there a second? Seconded by Bob? Bob, seconds. Any discussion? Look, all right to you, Tim?
Yep.
Bob, good?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Great, good. Chapter one sixty-five, um, while we're in this area, um, and when I say this, it's this area, I mean the, uh, the, uh, the schedule for, um, the meetings, the hearings for the public hearings, um, we're looking at June. And that's, we have the, 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 uh, the deadline. Howard's going to meet that tomorrow. Uh, those notices, so are those notices now going to move up, Howard? The July two thousand, the July notice that would have been on the fourth of July, notice number one.
Right, notice number one will go to the eleventh, and notice number two will go to the seventeenth.
Okay, so this moves down to the eighteenth, right? July eighteenth?
The seventeenth. I can't notice in the, in the record on the eighteenth because it's less than a week before the meeting.
Then, I don't think you can, the, the, the Georgetown Record doesn't come out on the seventeenth.
No, but I'm going to put it in a different paper. The Daily News or the Tribune or something like that.
Okay, put it in, so, so we, we're going to stick to the, the original schedule then? I'm confused. Oh, okay, we're sticking to that original schedule. I got confused. I thought we were moving them forward.
No, I just, notice number one just can't happen on the fourth in the record. It can happen in some other paper.
It can't happen in, in the other paper. So we throw them in the, in the paper that it can't happen in, and we stay right on the schedule.
Yeah.
That work for everybody? Good? Good. Um, and we'll be holding the public hearings for solar and wind on the twenty-fourth of July.
Now, those are the first public hearings, and so if there's more items for discussion, then we can do, you can just obviously continue it.
Oh, sure.
It doesn't have to be resolved in one night.
I'm sure there'll be continuations. August, um, is a publication deadline with, uh, the record for, uh, in the Georgetown Record for the public hearing of, uh, that's the.
Twenty-eighth for medical marijuana?
Twenty-eighth? Oh, yeah, the August twenty-eighth, that'll be for medical marijuana, and, um, do, do, do you have a public notice, uh, notice for that, or do you want to, you want to wait until a couple of weeks?
Yeah.
And so the medical marijuana, just, just so that everybody can follow along, the medical marijuana notice, um, hearing will be on the twenty-eighth of August. And, um, do we, well, we have, uh, in our meeting supplement, everybody take a look at some of these things that are in here. We have the Town of Dennis, their bylaw for that, right? And, um, seems pretty comprehensive. That was, that was approved, I believe, in, in the Town of Dennis, just re- just recently. And there's also a, uh, a template, well, by, um, the, uh, legal outfit called Hill Law, and that's a template, pretty easy to go through. You just sort of cross out what you don't like and fill in the blanks. And if I read it the right way, I think that's what Dennis used, I think.
It's close to it.
Sure, sure looks awfully close.
Yeah.
It does. Um, maybe, um, something that we might want to do at some point prior to the, um, prior to, um, the public hearing, as background, maybe we should have, um, maybe we could get some comments from, uh, KMP about the Hill Law template.
Okay.
And find out what they, uh, what they think, or if they have a template, perhaps.
Have we, uh, have we been requested to, um, support a moratorium?
In the planners packet, I offered up a moratorium as something to consider to allow for more planning time before actually implementing a bylaw.
Has anyone asked us to? No?
Well, maybe that's something we should, we should consider, um, and we would have to, of course, have a, a hearing for that. Whether it would be, uh, um, a hearing to have a moratorium.
I'd like to know the thoughts.
Or a hearing that would hold, that would, um, propose, uh, an actual bylaw. That's certainly something, either way, we would have to hold a public hearing for that, right?
No, um, to recommend, to recommend a, a moratorium.
Oh, we wouldn't need a public hearing for that?
No, 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 you may need a, I would have a public hearing on it.
Okay.
But I would like to know the feelings of the board, if they think, if the board thinks we should go for the bylaw or stick our neck out and wait two years and hopefully not miss it.
Cool. Can we do a little straw poll here?
Why do you say wait two years versus two months?
If you do.
I'm not, I didn't say I'm in favor of it. I, I'm raising the issue because I see this, this here with a.
Moratorium versus writing a bylaw.
I'm all in favor of writing the bylaw now. There's no time like the present. Especially knowing that we have a potential applicant willing to bring their business into town.
And whatever came of that? Nothing yet?
I haven't heard anything.
But they got to meet with the select one or something?
Well, it all depends on how the bylaw is written.
Oh, no, so they're just waiting for the bylaw?
Yeah, there are no rules and regulations, but they have expressed, from what I understood from the communication I saw, they have expressed an interest in a parcel of property in town that meets the state thresholds.
That may meet the state threshold.
How come they went to the town and the administrator's office?
So if they, if they.
One, one thing at a time, please. One thing at a time, please. Folks, one thing at a time. I'm sorry.
If they're already proposing that they purchase this piece of property for the purpose of growing marijuana, wouldn't that get in front of any rules or regulations we'd make at this point? wouldn't that get in front of any rules or regulations we'd make at this point since they've already proposed it?
I would, I would imagine that um they would have to go to the building inspector for a permit and how would they get it?
Well, because there's nothing that says they can't.
Is.
You can't, by by virtue of of not saying you can't do it, you're saying you can do it.
No, not with zoning.
I, I would beg to differ.
Zoning, if you, if you, if you don't have it listed in your intensity of use.
As a prohibited use, yes, as an accepted use, no. If it doesn't spell out that you can't do it, you can do it.
I mean, if somebody wants to try to grow mangoes, they will fail. We don't have any rules about growing mangoes.
Right. You would be right if you didn't have it.
It's not a controlled substance though.
You don't have to grow mangoes in a secure facility.
I think that's, yeah.
You wanna grow mangoes.
I think somebody could certainly make an argument to say that whereas it's not specified that we that you can't do it in this zone.
And that's my, I asked before, why, why, why the inquiry, they were inquiring through the selectmen's office? Do you know?
Well, as I understand, the only reason why they went to the selectmen's office was to see if the town of Georgetown is interested in in a facility like that.
That's it.
Now, they're not looking for a dispensary. They're looking for a grow house.
They're, they're looking cultivation only.
As long as it meets the state guidelines of the.
But what, what needs to happen? Is there, as I understand it, my perception is, is that they're interested. They think that there's a viable piece of property where they could do the growing operation. And they're trying to see if there's an interest in Georgetown from the selectmen. They still need to go and get a lot of other documentation put together before they're even gonna be coming into the town for any type of.
Well, there, there are, there were classes being offered several months ago um that were put on by organizations that have set up grow house and distribution centers in other states where it's been permitted already. And I believe that at that, if you went to those meetings, you got all the information you needed to just take to the town and say, this is what I wanna do.
Yeah, but that that's not enough.
There's a little bit to it and actually we've.
You have a not-for-profit, a not-for-profit that.
From the state side.
Right, but whereas, but whereas they've already expressed an interest in doing it and we don't, we haven't said under what terms you can or cannot.
We haven't issued a permit either.
Correct, but I think they'd be grandfathered. Because if they wanna just buy or lease a piece of property and use it for growing tomatoes or whatever they wanna grow, I don't think there's.
Well, if they wanna use it for growing tomatoes, it's a different story. It gets an agricultural exemption.
No, it doesn't, because I did read that.
It might.
It's exempt from any agricultural requirements, so it's not a part of the exception.
Interesting.
It's not part of the five-year sixty-one A. It's totally removed from the agriculture provisions that the state has.
Agricultural exemptions?
Right, I, I think if you wanted to have a a dispensary, now that's, that's a totally different thing because we don't have any place in town where you can operate a dispensary.
Well, if you look.
But to just operate a, a growing operation, you know, I don't care what you're farming. I, I don't think that we can say no.
Well, if you look at this.
This is an agricultural exemption.
Well, that's the way I see it. I'm not, I'm certainly not.
Interesting.
I'm certainly not a legal expert.
That's an interesting point.
If I can interject, just be careful about how much you're debating. I think the real thing you need to be doing now is considering which avenue to pursue. You wanna go down a, a, a actual, having a bylaw drafted up? Or the moratorium?
Moratorium.
Before you start debating some specifics. So because it hasn't been noticed, not a public hearing, there's policy that you gotta be careful of, so.
Well, if you read this Hill Law that we just got in this packet.
Can I, can I just, can I just bring, bring this discussion back to?
By, yeah.
And I, I'd really like to.
I'd like to address my question.
And that's what I was bringing it back to. Do, do we wanna move forward uh with a moratorium? Do we wanna move forward with a bylaw? I mean, it seems.
I'd say a bylaw.
A bylaw.
That's my.
Okay, Chris, you're a bylaw. Tim, you're a bylaw. Bob?
You can change a bylaw if you decide you made a mistake, but at least you got something.
Right, but I just wanna explain what a more.
I would.
Bylaw.
No, I wouldn't hear what, what, well, I'd like to hear what Howard says about.
Absolutely.
What's, what's. A, a moratorium, from a, my perspective as the planner, will allow more time than the board has between now and October. I'm not saying it's gonna go two years. I'm saying it will give you uh more time. You're protecting yourself until you do your annual town meeting where you can have it in. I just, I just don't think you have enough time for all the public hearings and getting all the boards, commissions and all the other input from the town to consider a full bylaw that's succinct by October. A moratorium, if you draft it up, it says we're not gonna consider any applications because we're still going through the planning process. And that planning process can be done, in my confidence, it can be done in plenty of time before May.
Have, have you read the Hill Law template? Have you had a chance to read that?
But you think not.
I think it's on all fours.
What's that?
Your opinion is.
I, I don't think you're gonna have enough time to entertain all the citizens' concerns, all their questions and everything else.
Well, can you answer his concern?
We don't know what the citizens' concerns are or what the citizens' questions are in the stack of process.
Exactly.
If we don't have anything on their books about this provision and someone applies, what happens? I think I emailed that. I didn't get an answer to that.
The provisions, which provision?
What, in the medical marijuana. If we don't have anything and an applicant comes in.
Which is today.
And if we don't have it listed in our.
Until October.
And we don't have it listed.
We're not gonna have anything. And you're trying to find out at this point.
If someone files for a permit.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't even know what kind of permit they'd try to file.
Well, can you find that out?
I've been trying to talk with John, but he, he's been in and out with some family business, so I'm planning to try to talk to him tomorrow. We keep missing each other.
That's how I, I read it, you know, and I'd be interested and see what John had to say about it. But as I read it, any use, you know, this or any other use, if the town does not have it listed, then a variance is required with the appeals board. Now, if that is still true, um, nobody can do this until such time. But the fact is, is that town council is, what's her name now? Lake, is it?
No, the, the, uh, Kay, the, or that, that, she's the one that specialized in the medical marijuana background for KMP.
She actually held the seminar at Holy Cross that I attended.
She indicated in that, yeah, she indicated that a moratorium would be best. But, and that's why, is that, is that the reason for it? Is that they would have to go to a variance? Or does the state law say if anybody comes in here, it's, it's permitted, period?
Well, I think you're talking about actually two different timelines. I, I think if you have the moratorium in place, you don't need to worry about if someone files. Your, your, your concern is two parts. If somebody files before anything is on the books.
Right.
I, I believe they'd have to file for a, a finding and a variance through that process.
Right.
Um, so the planning board wouldn't even see it. But if you do the moratorium and they file, they we're in the, it, it basically just halts things.
Yeah.
So.
But.
But a variance is very difficult to.
Achieve.
But if the Commonwealth says, said this is the law and you can't deny it, then that's all.
I don't think they said that. I, I think they said that you can't have a bylaw, but the attorney general said that you can't have a bylaw that doesn't outright ban. That was tried in Wakefield, I believe it was Wakefield.
Right, Wakefield wrote a bylaw that excluded it wholly and that was found not to be in keeping with the state.
At this point, it seems to me that we can't do anything, moratorium or bylaw that addresses it until October or November, the fall town meeting. Unless, you know, we wanna hold a special town meeting, but I, I doubt, I doubt very much we'd do that. We can move forward and bring a moratorium to the town meeting in fall, or we can bring a bylaw. Howard, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I've, I've read this and I'm in complete agreement with the rest of the board. I think we can pull off a bylaw. I think we can get a good bylaw in. Uh, Hill Law was very, very, I mean, very, very technical and they've hit everything that I could think of. I'll tell you, I think we can pull it off.
I don't think you're gonna get that much public input.
I know one person that'll be.
Steve.
Our, our nearby.
Okay, well.
Sure.
How do we wanna direct, um, uh, is there a motion for that or how do you wanna do it? What do you wanna do?
Yeah, we'll make a motion.
Well, what's your motion? Tim moves, Tim moves to.
Proceed with a.
Proceed.
With a, uh, writing a bylaw.
With writing a bylaw.
Second.
A bylaw.
Retaining.
For medical marijuana.
Growing and distribution.
Uh, that's Tim's motion, uh, seconded by, who seconded that? I'm sorry.
Chris.
Chris, you seconded?
I did.
For a second. I think we discussed it to death.
You think?
Don't you? Any other comments from anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
I think, I think, uh, to, to make it a smooth process, we have so many examples now with this medical marijuana and the solar and, and the uh other one. Um, I think if, if we, you just checked off which ones you, which provisions on all of these towns that you like and you feel it fit into Georgetown, and then we could go through it one, one meeting.
Ironically enough, the templates that's created by, by Hill Law is, is actually A, B, C, cross out the ones you don't like.
Oh, I haven't read it yet.
Yeah, yeah, give, give it, give it a read. I mean, it's, it's, uh.
Yeah. That would be good.
It's pretty comprehensive. I, I kinda wish that sometimes when KMP sends us information like that, you, you'd be amazed. It's literally choose one of the, the following three.
Howard could be, Howard could be right. In a moratorium, it may not be, we may not be able to come up with a bylaw before October or November.
Oh, Dennis seemed to do it.
In which case, a moratorium's never.
The town of Dennis seems good.
It's not.
So, I don't think there's any.
I, I think acting sooner than later is better.
I think, I think there, I think there's a lot of interest with this. And, and I think for us to hold it up when we could be assisting someone that would really need this, I think it's wrong. I think we gotta move forward. People voted for it. We have it. Let's get it. I mean, there's always amendments that you're gonna add later on down the line.
You know, my biggest concern, we put this off for a year with a moratorium. We go, we go with a moratorium and the moratorium passes at town meeting. And we all go, oh, okay, good. We don't have to worry about it for one year, two years, whatever the expiration date of the moratorium is. And then everything starts getting crazy and we get busy.
I don't think the town would approve a moratorium. Look at the votes on the question in Georgetown.
It's an interesting point too. It's an interesting point too.
We're in favor of it. Why would you vote for it and then vote for a moratorium to fight it?
But see, the, the moratorium isn't to fight it. The moratorium's just to make sure that you do a comprehensive bylaw.
But there's enough examples.
You don't have to wait till the end of the moratorium to do that. You can do a moratorium that is up to two years and by the next town meeting, which is what, six months away, you can have the bylaw done. So.
We can fit it. I think we'll get it done.
I think, I think this is more important than the other two.
So it's pretty easy.
So there you go. I think this is more important than the other two.
I think all three of them really ought to be done.
I don't think that putting it off for a year is gonna make it any easier to go through this.
I doubt it. Well, I think we're gonna get busy.
We can look at here.
Housing starts are up. This board is gonna start getting busy. I don't in one year or in two years wanna have to deal with us. I think now we have the time to deal with it. We've got an incredibly light schedule. How many projects we have going right now? Two.
I think Georgetown could benefit from any tax revenue they could generate.
All I know is I hope that we can tax any product that's growing.
Unlike Lisa Lane, we'll be showing a tax expense, another tax.
Uh, well, um, Howard's gonna start writing us a bylaw or how do you wanna move with that? Do you wanna send this to um the Hill Law template to um to Kay? Because, I mean, one of the things that, that she said in one of her letters was she'd be happy to help us write a bylaw. And maybe the easiest way would be to just send this to her and ask her what she thinks. Or I'll have a phone call with her maybe.
I, I want to meet with the board tonight and then I'm gonna proceed on my waiting, what direction you want to go in and start drafting something up and then start coordinating with her.
Yeah, give her a jingle. Find out what she thinks of the Hill Law. Send her a email.
Two to four weeks. I mean, maybe we'd have enough time to like review it and at least like have a ten minute discussion.
And we'll have the hearing in, um, well, in two weeks, we're gonna be.
Well, to begin with, this was done prior to the state doing their regulatory framework, so maybe the, maybe it's different today. Maybe he, Hill was doing something different now that he's got it.
Well, the nice thing is we.
So this might not be its final.
We have the template and the nice thing is that I'm sure that um being that it was already adopted by a couple of communities um in, in Massachusetts, I'm sure KMP is more than familiar with it. And that they probably have their markups to make it a little bit better. And Howard, it, it sounds like you, you think it's gonna be a, a long and uh, very involved process, but I think with the assistance of town council, you'll, I think we'll get through this.
Okay.
Any concern of a planning board member or member of the public? Well, the public.
Hello?
Try to stay in, stay in order, everybody now, one at a time. Uh, anybody have any concern that isn't on the agenda? Good, moving on. Planning office, Lisa Lane, OSRD. Uh, I'll hear a motion.
The, the, the one, the reason why I put it on there was because they had it at the last meeting and they filled it out. But there wasn't a motion to accept it made at the last meeting.
Motion to accept.
If you're gonna accept this Form H, you're gonna be accepting it not in a public hearing.
Isn't this ministerial?
Okay.
I just wanna make sure.
No, this is ministerial. Form H extension of time for Lisa Lane, OSRD.
So what was the date again?
Is, can I have a motion for that?
Uh, it was on June twelfth and they're extending it to July thirtieth.
So, Tim makes the motion to accept the Lisa Lane Form H extension for the OSRD to July. What was that date? I'm sorry.
July thirtieth.
July thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, seconded by Chris and discussion.
Any concern of the planning board after this? I think we, we talked about the extension of time when they were here.
Right, but I guess we didn't vote it first second. We didn't have a motion a second and a vote to accept it, which is part of what we have to do. It's, it's minister, it's.
As far as I'm concerned, I thought we were, we, we were all in agreement. We would like to.
Extend, yeah.
Extend the time.
Why did they wanna extend it?
Well, we have to.
Because their hearing timeline for the board to reach a decision is, is going to expire between the last public hearing and when it was continued to.
I thought the OSRD was dead and buried.
Half of it, the OSRD portion of it, but that whole hearing is still open because it was bifurcated.
So, so when you, but you keep saying, OSRD, that, that's dead, that part of.
That part, but that part was voted away.
Public hearings continuing with you, considering just the preliminary.
Right, the preliminary. Yeah, the preliminary portion still, still carries forward and that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, that for the hearing, for that hearing. Yep. Um, motion was made to extend to July thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, seconded by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Till he signs, right? This action is deemed ministerial. This action is deemed ministerial. Um, Chris, I would go to my map, but you said you said you had a concern or something?
I feel possessive with that map.
But you're a map too. It's everybody's.
I, I would like to go to the concern of, of planning board member and or a member of the public.
What's your concern?
Uh, I have a question. Have we ever done um the reviews that are required by personnel board?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that.
How long have you been?
Over a year.
As required?
And the answer's no.
Have you done one for Wendy?
By the.
No.
Personnel board.
We need to do it. We need to somehow get it into our schedule.
Okay, I'm gonna defer to you on that. You're on the personnel board. I don't know anything about that.
You started August, right?
How does that work?
Yeah, how does it work? The board reviews. The board reviews Howard.
Okay. And Howard reviews Wendy?
Howard reviews Wendy.
Okay. Can we, uh-
And it gets, the forms get sent to Mike.
Okay. Is, is that something that needs to be done? We don't do that at a public meeting, do we?
Um, at his option, it, it, you're allowed to do it at a public meeting.
You have to, yeah.
At his option, he can request executive session.
Is that the personnel?
I never see any of the other boards do that.
That's written in the personnel, then?
I never see, like, the ZBA do that or anything.
No, it's written in the open meeting law. And if it's a personnel, if it's a personnel issue-
Evaluation of the personnel or discussion of them.
The party, yes.
I have to read that again. I thought it was the other way around.
It's their option that they can request executive session.
But I think when, the open meeting law, when, when they referred to personal, they're talking about health issues, family matters. Really?
Specifically, I think it specifically says review.
It does say that, but it, it has to be in public, I think.
I would be very surprised. I mean, that's an incredibly sensitive thing. If you have someone not like you who might need a performance improvement plan, that's not something that you would err publicly.
Again, laundry, doesn't it?
I believe the way I read the-
But it is damaging to an individual's reputation.
I, I, I'm, I'm sure that the individual-
That's a reason to enter into executive session.
It's legitimate.
But, as Chris said, it's the option of the person that is subject of that review to say, yes, I wanna be, or I want it out in the public.
It does make sense.
Because I, I remember watching the school committee.
If I don't say anything, if I stay silent, then I think it needs to happen in an executive session.
I don't think we can have it in an executive session. I disagree with that.
You, you remember watching the school committee, and they know what?
And they do, they evaluate through a superintendent, and they, what they do is they have the forms.
The super, I mean, from what I see from school committee meetings, it's the elevens.
What, what's the process here?
But that's how they do it.
Why would you not want that?
Okay, okay. Do we have, uh, uh, forms that we fill out, or?
Yeah, there's, there's standard forms that, that I can get. And I just did this with the Affordable Housing Trust, and you just cross things out and add in as they apply to the planning board, so.
Do we, do we wanna do this next, uh, at our next meeting or something?
What I'm saying is, it needs to be addressed. It needs to be on our hit list.
Glad you brought it up.
Get it over with.
Is there a sense of urgency to this? Do we wanna do this at the next meeting or a subsequent meeting?
A sense of urgency, yeah. On a scale of one to ten, I would probably call it a negative three.
When, when does the board feel comfortable doing this?
I'm getting my two and a half pay raise whether or not you have this reviewed by the end of June, so.
Has nothing to do with that. I just wanna see, because I can't, I sit on this board. I'm also the chair of the personnel board, and I wanna make sure that we are on top of everything that's supposed to be done. Because I know for a fact other departments are not doing it.
Okay. Well, we're gonna make sure that this board does it right in, in all things, and-
I can send the documents out to the planning board members.
Thank you, Howard. Howard will, uh, will distribute the documents.
And you don't send them back to me after you fill them out. You send them to Harry.
You send them to me?
Right, you're the chairman, right?
Okay. Okay, distribute.
And they stay in confidence.
I think I need to read that personnel law. I really gotta get a copy from you. Is that on the, uh, the town website?
Uh, yeah.
It is? I could never find it.
The open meeting law is-
No, not the open meeting law, the personnel.
Well, he's referring to the open meeting law, which I think really-
The open meeting law says that we can, at the option of the employee, rather than have their personal situation discussed in an open meeting, can, they can request that it be discussed in executive session at the employee's option. Understand what I'm saying? We don't have a vote on it. As far as we're concerned, it's open. It's in an open meeting.
Well, you're referring-
The employee has the right to say, timeout. I don't want it discussed on TV.
You're referring to, what you're referring to is, um-
Reasons to enter executive session.
Reasons to enter executive sessions.
Yeah, and that is, I, I believe that's one of them. We'll check.
If you, if you follow through it, it specifically says not job performance. So they cannot go into executive session.
Well, I'll, you know what? Why don't we do this? Why don't I review this? Howard, you review it, please. Let us know what you think.
I'll send out, I'll send out the open meeting executive sessions list.
Yeah, it's only a page.
Yeah, it may be moot anyway. And I thought I had a copy of that floating around somewhere. I think I-
We should have it with every meeting, you know?
I thought I had a quick cheat sheet that I had, uh, in here. I cleaned out this, uh, this folder.
You never know when that, that comes up.
It certainly will. Um, so you're gonna send out the forms? And Howard, it sounds to me like you're gonna, uh, take care of reviewing Wendy for us.
Yeah, when it gets closer to one year.
August, sometime in August.
Yeah, I'm gonna give her a little bit more time now that she knows she's gonna be reviewed.
Oh, okay. On your best behavior now, Wendy. No typos in those minutes now.
No surprises. Is that what you told her?
Chris, does that, does that, um, address everything you wanted addressed?
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything else? Any other concern?
No.
Should we discuss your map?
Uh, yes. MVPC MyMap 2014. Talk to me, Howard.
MyMap.
This is the, what was included in the packet is contract with Merrimack Valley to provide MyMap for fiscal year 14. I just wanted you to see the scope. Same thing last year. We can't pay it in fiscal three, 13. So when fiscal 14 rolls around, if you authorize me to sign the contract now, I can send it. And then they send the bill in fiscal year 14, then you'll see the budget.
This is the same contract, scope of services that we had in 2013, if I, if I have.
The only difference being they changed the three to four. Same price.
I'll hear a motion to authorize Howard to sign the contract for MyMap services.
Dated twenty, June 2013.
Twenty, dated twenty?
Twentieth of June, 2013.
Twenty thirteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Till he seconds?
I did.
Chris made the motion.
Kelly, you seconding?
Till he seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. No whispering if you want a good review now. Uh, anything else? Did we miss anything?
I think that's it. We're ready adjourned?
Happy 4th of July, everybody. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Chris moves to adjourn. Seconded by Bob, was that you?
Yeah.
You were very quick on that. All in favor?
I'm hoping for a record aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Eight twenty-four.
Meeting is adjourned.
Too bad we don't have a hockey game.
At eight?
Or a baseball.
Oh, that's sad.